Call to order, City Commission Meeting of Tuesday, December 18th, 2018. Let the record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Yes, President Decker, there is one. Item number F, under the Consent Agenda, approval of public transit and elder care contract. We'll move that to 3F, under Administration, for a little further discussion and information.
Okay. Any other changes?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the changes to the Order of Business? Now I look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
A motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Gah on the Order of Business? Not all in favor of the Order of Business as amended, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. The Order of Business is approved with the amendment. Consent Agenda, is there anything on the Consent Agenda that commissioners wish to discuss? There's nothing to discuss, it is amended, so I'd look for a motion to the amended Consent Agenda. Move to approve. A motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on the Consent Agenda or the amended part of it? Not, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The amended Consent Agenda is approved. We have a couple of timetable items starting at 5:00 PM, but we will start in our non-timetable and with Administration and Finance. Mr. Gah, we have a property purchase possibly, I guess, to discuss.
That's correct, Mr. President. This is in the Fisher Eastside addition, lots three and four, you have a map that shows them. It's our understanding that these were basically forfeited back to the county due to lack of paid property tax. They were offered up for public sale, they were not sold, as is customary, then they offered them to the city for $50 apiece because there is a pretty significant amount of special assessment on each one to recover. You have those amounts in your packet, ones in the 30,000s, ones near 50,000. So it's our recommendation that if you are willing to purchase these for $50 apiece, to try and recoup the assessments, which would be pricing each of those at $50,000, which may be a little bit high above the market, but we recommend trying that first and seeing what sort of interest we may get before we revisit some other options.
Any questions for Mr. Gah on this, these two properties?
I know the properties pretty well. It's the zoning that's going to be the hang-up for selling. I think there are two, if I'm correct.
That is correct.
There's commercial all around it, so it's going to be a tough... I think that's why they probably let them go. Not going to build a duplex or a house across the street from a commercial structure. Unless we're... Would the city's open to changing the zoning? It's something we can discuss, I guess, but...
Regardless, I think we need to...
I think we...
Buy them for $50 and we get what we get for them.
Yeah, I mean, even if we get half our money back, it's better than nothing, so...
Sure.
I agree. But I think they would be more attractive if we're... Who would be open and looking at the zoning on them.
Any other comments or questions from Mr. Gah? Not, I'd look for a motion on this property.
Mr. President, I move that we purchase the two lots, three and four, from the county for $50 each.
We have a motion to buy the two properties for $50 each.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a Fee Schedule Amendment, and that will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. It was proposed that late fees be added for tobacco and alcohol license renewals. Tatch will find a resolution that amends the fee schedule by adding both an initial application fee of $50 and a late fee of $50 for the tobacco license. Fee already existed for the alcohol license, but it was reworded to be more clearly identifiable, so staff has also noted a need for a fee for a taproom alcohol license as well, and to coincide with the new... As well as a fee addition to coincide with the new mobile home and campground ordinances. And all those fees were in your packet, if you have any questions on those fees. But other than that, I would ask staff is recommending approval that adopt that new resolution to amend the fee schedule.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this Fee Schedule Amendment? And this is Resolution... 29, 2018? Okay. There are no comments or questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff, I'd look for a motion on 29-2018.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
A motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have another item that will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson, it's Stone Ridge Agreement.
Thank you. Again, this agreement is... We have Great Plains, Microsoft is our main module for financials, and upon that, we also have DFC, which was our DFC Dynamics, and they were a partnership with that. They have been bought out. And so we have now have been asked to reestablish a new master services agreement, and then also a software agreement with Stone Ridge. And DFC Consultants is a Microsoft Gold partner and joined with Stone Ridge Software, which was founded in 2012, and is the largest Microsoft Gold ERP partner in Upper Midwest. As a business technology firm, they specialize in Microsoft Dynamics, whereas the city had a service agreement with DFC for Dynamics GP, which is Great Plains. The new agreement with Stone Ridge includes a master service agreement, and then a separate support agreement. With DFC, both agreements were wrapped up into one, that's why we have two this time. The rates for the new master agreement and service agreement will be the same as if it was that we had with the DFC agreement. Staff is recommending approval of both the Stone Ridge Software Master Agreement and then the Support Agreement. And if there's any questions that I can help answer as far as those agreements go, they were in your packet.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Carlson? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this consideration to approve the agreement with Stone Ridge.
Mr. President, will we approve the master service agreement with Stone Ridge?
A motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions on this agreement? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on Stone Ridge. Next item up is City Board Appointments, and City Administrator Gah, you will be handling this.
In your packet, you had a list of committees, memberships expiring at the end of the year, with several of the members that are willing to be reappointed, six different members on four different commissions. You have the list in front of you, and it's a staff recommendation to reappoint all of those citizens.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah? I know we're still looking, just for the public watching, we're still looking for another member for the Special Assessment Committee. And we'll also be discussing tomorrow morning. Staff has done some research into the makeup of the planning and zoning and the project, we need to make some adjustments to that. And then get the county on board to get us an ETZ representative. So anybody watching that follows these boards or desires to be on one of them, please contact city staff or county staff if you're in the ETZ. So any other questions, comments for Mr. Gah on these appointments? Not, I'd look for a motion on these appointments.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the appointments.
A motion to approve the appointments?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the appointments. Item E, and that is, we have some reports. First one will come from City Administrator Gah.
This is just really informational. In week two, and I guess now we're in week four of my tenure, and everything's still new, but in week two, I attended two different meetings. One was the Southwest Water Authority, and one was the State Water Board, learning that there's a big interest, we should have a big interest, I think, in both of you, there's a lot of things going on. The Southwest Water Authority has a tax levy that sunsets next year. Some of you have probably been visited already, the rest of you probably will, regarding, you know, lobbying for that and encouraging that, they'd like to take the sunset off. There's some things going on at the State Water Commission, they, for lack of a better word, own the Southwest Water Authority, and they've considered giving them their own autonomy. There's a feasibility study likely to be done in the next year on that. I think we have a big interest in that. One of the things I noticed is I just, I think we need to pay attention to what's going on with those two entities a little bit more, and develop a little bit more of a relationship. Myself and several staff attended those meetings. We've had a meeting since then with the Director of the Southwest Water Authority, and I think just continuing to answer, ask some questions, and get some answers, and support them a little bit better, I think, once we have that knowledge. But that's just something you'll continue to hear something about, and I'll probably reach out to all of you as those discussions continue.
Okay, any comments or questions for Mr. Gah on his report from Water Commission? All right, thank you, Mr. Gah. Next up is we have a HR report, the Hiring Journal.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. First step, we have police officer openings. Right now, we just recently did interviews, and they have been passed on for a second interview with the chief and the captains. Street operator, we are kind of on hold for that right now. This is not a real good time around the holidays to be advertising positions, and operators have been pretty difficult to fill, so they're kind of holding off on that one for a little bit. Fleet Assistant, Services Assistant, we did fill that position. Water Treatment Plan Operator, we have an opening in that department, and I'm trying to remember where... Oh, that one closes on the 26th, so we're still getting applications for that one. Solid Waste Landfill Operator, and then we also have a Route Operator for Solid Waste. We did some interviews, finishing that up tomorrow morning for those two positions. Let's see, the Clerk of Court, there was an internal opening for the Clerk of Court Two, and that was filled internally, which opened up the HR Assistant Position, and that has been, we've interviewed, and an offer's been made, and that person will start on next Monday. Animal Control, we had a part-time position open. That position also, we did interview, and that will... That position will be filled right after the first of the year. And so we have several other positions open right now. Firefighter, we have two openings for 2019 that were approved at the 2019 budget. And we have Legal Assistant, same way, approved for 2019, that is open right now. Risk Management Specialist, we have not opened yet, we will be doing that real soon, and as well as the Fossil Preparator Position. Any questions on any of those?
Any questions for Mrs. Nama? All right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. And then we'll move on to, if we have time, we'll move on to item F, and that is, I had requested city staff that we pull out the public transit elder care contract, make that a discussion item rather than just Consent Agenda, just because of the terms. And I... See, we have a representative here, and if we... So if we do have any questions, I'm sure she is more than willing to ask, who will be handling this? Mr. Gah?
I will.
Okay, Mrs. Carlson, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just to wrap, just kind of an overview of this, the city is pleased to partner with the public transit to offer on-demand and pre-schedule rides to the citizens of our community. The city has budgeted to subsidize public transit operations for 2019 and '20. We had a two-year contract with them for quite a while, in the amount of $55,000 per year. On that, then the elder care public transit also receives a percentage of the city's sales tax for a budgeted amount of $150,000 for each year of 2019 and '20. In addition, the city of Dickinson does provide in-kind support, which is on rent utilities, water, sewer, garbage, and snow removal insurances of over around $80,000, is what it figures annually. And if there's any questions of what we've done in the past, or anything like that, I can sure help you with that.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? Like I said, I just requested that this get pulled out of the Consent Agenda, just because of the amount of money that we do subsidize them with, just to make sure that the public understands our commitment to public transit, so...
In this contract, is it any different than the ones that have it done before?
No, the only difference is if the commission remembers from before, they did have a fixed route survey thing, and we did have a little bit more money in that to help support that fixed route survey, but now we've come down to where we normally do for their support on that.
Any additional questions, comments? Not, I'd look for a motion on this contract, this agreement with public transit.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
A motion to approve with a second. Any comments or questions for Mrs. Carlson on this agreement? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the agreement with public transit. We'll move on to Engineering. We don't have anything from Public Safety this evening, so we'll move into Engineering.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. Before you, we have the 2019 Pavement Management Program Services Contract with MDS Technologies. They specialize in pavement management plans for municipalities, and they'll work with our 2014 plan and establish a basis for our future street maintenance CIP projects. The contract amount is $29,970. The city engineering staff recommends approval. Have any questions for me?
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Marshick?
Ms. Marshick, how do they conduct the study? Do... Is it through tests, or is it just through analysis?
Based on their process, it's a visual study, and because they specialize it, they have a vehicle equipped with all sorts of sensors and cameras, and so they can drive our streets and pick up those ratings much quicker than other entities which have to send people out to physically go and look at those conditions of our pavement.
So when our citizens are curious how we prioritize our roads and the needs, it's through this contract that the results that we get back from it?
Correct. Previous studies have been done by different firms, and they've utilized people to go out and check the condition, and they would input that data and rate the streets, and then with those ratings, they would score them. And that's how we would come up with our pavement management program for the next couple of years, based off those ratings. And we're due to have that done again and help rate what needs the most attention.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Marshick? Not, I'd look for a motion on this contract.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve the contract with MDS?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Public Works, we have an Apex Tax Task Order, and Public Works Directors are off, will be handling that.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. Here is Apex Task Order Number Two for the Reuse Booster Station. This is for design bidding and construction management and administration services for generator at the reuse booster station. This is a 2019 budgeted item in a waste butter plant fund. Compensation for the services are not to exceed $39,000. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Mr. Zeroff on this task order? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the task order.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further questions, comments for Mr. Zeroff or staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the task order. And then you have a equipment replacement request, Mr. Zeroff.
That's correct, President Decker and Commissioner. In the 2019 budget, we have multiple capital leases. One of them is a snow blower, and in those leases... Excuse me. Just recently, we... I know at the budget hearing, I did bring up the condition of our bucket truck. Right at that time, we just had it analyzed, and somebody go through it on hydraulics. I didn't get it in on the 2019 capital leases, but just recently, the last two weeks, we've had an accident on the back, which has pushed in the back of the bucket truck and affected the outrigger. So because of that accident, and what we found analyzing the truck last summer, we would like to put that as a priority above one of the approved capital leases for 2019, which was the snow blower. We feel that we can continue to maintain the snow blower, which was an approved capital lease for 2019, and replace it with the bucket truck that is not operational right now. It's a 1985 used bucket truck, MDU. We thought we'd get a year out of it, another year out of it, but it's not, and currently we don't have... We don't... The city does not have a bucket truck. The dollars would be under the original approved capital lease for the snow blower, within those dollars. Just looking for permission to go forward with that.
Are you looking at a new piece of equipment, or is it...
Probably. You know, one thing we found out with the old MDU bucket truck is, we probably don't need all, you know, all that truck. Some of the newer buckets come on like a one-ton, like the smaller utilities used like J-Bo, they actually have a higher reach. So I think we can get a higher reach, a better reach in a bucket on a smaller chassis, on a smaller truck. We don't need that, you know, all that big truck, we just need to reach more than anything. And we feel, we did look at that in budget, and around 140 to 150, we can get a good, like a one-ton with an outreach truck that's 60-foot high, and we feel we can get within that range. Also considering used, to have used ones out there, the different buckets reconditioned, that we're going to start looking at.
Okay, any other questions for Mrs. Zeroff? Mrs. Carlson, just adjustment to the... Will we have to amend the budget, or...
Yes, if you would make a motion, and then that would amend the budget so that we could use, change out the equipment. Because we have the amount already approved for the snow blower. Just going to amend it.
Okay. Any other comments or questions for staff? Not, I'd look for a motion to consider, to approve the change on the equipment leases.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries to approve the change. We have a few minutes here. Ms. Hadley, you can get four minutes, you can get this in, right?
I can. Thank you, Mr. President. This is amending a joint powers agreement with Stark County for the planning contract from 12 to 16 hours. It was approved through your 2019 budget appropriation, and staff would ask that you approve that so we can take it to the county and get it approved.
Okay, any questions for Planning Director Hadley on this contract adjustment?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the amended joint powers agreement with Stark County for planning services.
We have a motion to approve the joint powers agreement. Or the joint, I should say, joint contract, not joint powers, joint contract.
Second.
With a second, to approve. Any further discussion, comments, or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That will take us into our timetable, and the first item up is a public hearing, an amendment to the liquor license ordinance, and this is for our taproom license, and City Attorney Murtha will be handling this.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. This is the second reading and public hearing for order in 1664 to add a new type of license under the alcohol licensing that is available through the city. And it was last heard at the prior meeting this month on 12/4. At that time, a draft ordinance was presented to you. I believe this version, there is some additional language, it's highlighted in red on page two, or it should be... It wasn't highlighted. Sorry, you did not get a color copy of that. The only difference in the language is that there... And it doesn't change the requirements under state law. The reason why the additional language was added is because the previous version referred to the requirements under state law, but this, in speaking with the Tax Commissioner's Office, there was a very important distinction between microbreweries and taprooms, and to make sure that everyone is aware of that, and when they're reviewing the language and ordinances, thought it would be appropriate to incorporate this language into our ordinance at the local level. And that is the fact that, under state law, the taproom and brewer license, you can have multiple taproom and brewer licenses, but you cannot hold any other type of liquor license. So for example, a brewer taproom licensee could not obtain a restaurant liquor So for example, a brewer taproom licensee could not obtain a restaurant liquor license. They can only sell, they can only brew and sell their own beer on their premises. They also can apply for 20, up to 20 special events during the year to be able to directly sell their product at trade shows or other type of events. The difference between the microbrewery and the taproom license, and I've had the opportunity to speak with interested persons in these last two weeks, are asking, well, what is the big differences between the microbrewery license and the taproom license other than the amount of beer that you can sell? And the major distinction between the two is, one, this license requirement that only brewer taprooms, that they can only have this type of license and they can't hold other ones and that they also get to participate in the trade shows, whereas a microbrewery licensee would be able to hold other types of liquor licenses such as the restaurant liquor license, but they would not be able to participate in special events. They cannot sell their beer directly off of their premises. So they has to be, they can sell it to a distributor who can then sell it to retailers and that's how it can be sold. So it's basically a business model preference. Both types of licenses have the ability to be combined with food service at their locations. So that is not a distinction. So with, with that clarification, I would, I have no further comments, but I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha on our amendment to our liquor license, the taproom license? Hearing no questions at this time, I will open up the public hearing and if there's anyone from the public wishes to come forward and have any comments on the, our amendment to the liquor license ordinance, which is adding a taproom license, please come forward, state your name and let us know your concerns. Seeing no one from the public, I'll close the public hearing. And commissioners, any additional questions or comments on this amendment? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote on ordinance number 1664. It is amending our liquor license to include taproom license. I guess I, what I'd look for first is a motion.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on ordinance number 1664. We have another public hearing at 5:10, which gives us about, we have about additional seven minutes. So we'll move into public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. Is there any issues that concern citizen has that are not on the agenda this evening? You may come forward and state your name and let us know what your concern is. Anyone from the public? Seeing that no one has any concerns, not on the agenda, we'll move into item 11, commission. Is there anything on the minds of the commissioners that they wish to discuss that was not on the agenda this evening?
Mr. President, I would like a quick update from Mr. Hirschfeld on the special Stark County meetings.
Put you on the spot. Most certainly did. In fact, enough on the spot, I have to ask for the question again, please.
I would just like an update from the special meeting, Stark County Commissioners.
Okay. The special meeting was a continuation of the abatement hearing that was started two weeks ago. Meeting started at eight o'clock. There were three different, well, several properties that were being, excuse my brace, we're just about done for the day, so I have to try and get this all back on track here. Three different attorneys or tax reps that were representing the several properties. They were the same ones that were before us earlier in the, in the year here. And the ones that hadn't been heard, well, I'll start with the ones that had been heard and action taken were Mr. Clements and Mr. Royals' properties. They had all been denied at the prior meeting and then we got into these other three and the discussion was going to be longer than what the day had allowed, so that was what brought forth the, the new meeting date. And so then those that hadn't been heard were heard today, they were denied, but there was a caveat at the last meeting where the ones who'd had a decision rendered were allowed to come back and, and give additional testimony. At that time, there were two properties owned by Mr. Royal that the commission, Stark Commission had rescinded their prior decision and went ahead and made decreases to two of the properties. Park Place was decreased from roughly $680,000, going by memory, down to $360,000. And then a century was decreased from the 10,000 per unit we did down to, I believe it was $4,800,000. Was in line with the figure that Mr. Greenly had in his appraisal. So that's, in essence, the, where those numbers are at, we'll have to see as this moves forward whether the ones that were denied will move forward to district court. Mr. Royal, I'll be paraphrasing here a little bit, but at today's meeting, he did say that if decreases were made, that he didn't expect to be sending so many emails any longer. So be looking at your inbox and see if there's some empty space. That's, in a nutshell, kind of what happened today. Long hearing, had a lot of testimony and.
What, what was the reason for reducing from $600,000 on to $300,000? They just can't reduce it. What's the reason for?
They, I guess they gave a lot of weight to that Blount sale that had sold for $30,000 a unit, $360,000. Mr. Royal said several times that that property was a very good match to his Park Place property. The commission must have weighed pretty heavily on that despite the regression analysis that I'd worked up Monday with his attorneys showing that that property was an outlier and well below what the market should have been. They relied on it pretty heavily and I think that's what played into that decision.
Thank you.
In our reduction, we had reduced the century apartments by, if I remember correctly, about 10,000 per unit.
That is correct. And 120 units, a million 200,000.
And they reduced it substantially more.
Quite a bit more, yes.
All based on income then?
Income was a big topic. It was a thorn in my side because we send out the request for income information. The last couple of years, it's been a little bit better, some property more so than others. Hotels have been pretty forthcoming the last year or so. Apartments, not so much, but that was, the big discussion was, was incomes.
So if it was reduced based on income, should we keep tabs on it, see if he reduces or if he increases rent 50 or $100 a month that we should be contacting to increase taxes again?
Well, and that is a very good question because, you know, it always come back to you, our incomes today are down so much and, you know, the assessments aren't keeping track. You know, we, I've shown that, you know, the inverse was true on the way up. We weren't able to keep up with the increase in income. So, you know, I expect there'll be some of this discussion gets to the legislature this year that are we going to continue to try and use 30 sales from the past three years or is a change going to be made where we can front end this valuation just a little bit and stay on top of market? As you know, you know, I do my best to follow what, what state law says, but I would not be against the opportunity to follow these values a little bit closer and when it comes time to abatement, you know, it's awful hard to be talking about something that occurred three and four years ago when we're in a completely different market in the current time period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions while Mr. Hirschfeld's up here? Since we have you on the spot. I'm sure it was a long day at the courthouse, so. But thank you.
Thank you.
All right. It's 5:10 and we have another public hearing and it is our campground ordinance. And this is consideration to approve the first reading of, and this will be ordinance 1665.
Yes, and, and public hearing.
And public hearing. So this will be handled by City Attorney Murtha.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the commission. Before you is the, first reading is the updated or actually brand-new draft of the campground license ordinance. To briefly recap for anyone watching, previously, when the mobile home and campground ordinance had come through, the licensing provisions for both types of parks were contained in the same ordinance. When the mobile home was finalized, it was, the campground licensing provisions were removed. This was done at the suggestion of the building official who indicated that he thought it would improve clarity with regards to the requirements that were applicable to each type of park if they were made into separate ordinances. And so what you have before you is essentially those provisions that had been in the prior drafts of the, of the mobile home ordinance and then were ultimately pulled out and put into their own ordinance with some slight revisions. So the definition section is, is up top, the key definitions that were talked about at the subsequent committee hearing that was had on December 5th related to the definition of temporary and how long can a recreational vehicle remain in a, in a park and be still considered temporary? And so the definition, as it currently reads, is 270 days with a minimum of a 30 days absence before another continuous period shall start. So compliance with this particular definition would, would result in an RV that could remain in a park for a continuous nine-month period, would then need to leave for 30 days, but could then restart that, a new nine-month period after, after that is done. The campground license provisions essentially mirror that of the mobile home under O2.0. The next one, O3.0, application for license and renewal fees. Again, this mirrors the mobile home ordinance which was passed, as does the term of license. The campground standards are where we start to see a little bit of deviation. The lot limits, there is going to be, campgrounds are going to have maps and indicate where the camping sites are and the, and this provision reflects that with the requirement that there be a 10-foot separation between any recreational vehicle or tent. So that would be between any recreational vehicle and another vehicle, between any tent and another tent, or any combination of. The street standards are the same as they were for the mobile home parks. The next section, there is, there's a lot less language in here with regards to water, fuel, sanitary sewer and electrical connections only because there's, in the campground portions of combined parks or campgrounds themselves, there's going to be less connections, but basically that they be installed and maintained appropriately. There is a particular, the next section with regards to propane supply was another point of discussion and that just addresses safety concerns with regards to the amount of propane or the size of the propane tanks that can be had on the campground and related to the, in their proximity to the RVs. So this kind of plays into the first provision with regards to the 10 feet between RVs or RVs and tents. And so in addition to, I'll just note for anyone listening, that in addition to an RV that has an attachment, that you can also have an additional external propane tank that is not to exceed 120 gallons on any campground lot. Going through, most of the other provisions again relate back to the requirements of century code. There is also another emergency management plan requirement similar to the mobile home ordinance. And then at the end, section J is the requirement that the campground owner, again, monitor how long their RVs are there, that it not exceed 270 days. And also that if there are RVs that are using the park as part of their nine months during the winter months of December, January and February, that any of those RVs be all weather rated and that definition is found up top above. And this again is to address safety concerns, to make sure that those, those RVs that choose to stay are appropriately insulated for North Dakota weather. The, again, the appeal section is similar to or exactly the same as the mobile home park ordinance. At this time, I, that completes my summary. I'd be happy to answer any questions or refer any questions that I can't answer to the experts in the back of the room, our fire chief and building official.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Murtha or building official Schwent or our fire department?
Ms. Murtha?
Mm-hmm.
We, in the previous ordinance, had the 270-day requirement and this new 30-day minimum is an addition, is that correct? Asking them to leave the park for 30 days?
That is correct.
And the community, how do we phrase it? Mobile community can hold a, or a license for a mobile home park as well as an RV park?
That is correct.
Do they have to separate them?
So I should probably refer that question to, to our building official because I believe that on their, and as he, as he walks up, will say that on their maps that describe the, the property or areas, they're, they usually are separated. I mean, not with a fence or anything, but by, just by area, but there, there are some parks that have, have a mix where there might be.
Basically segregated.
Segregated, yeah. Their RVs might be in and among the mobile homes that are there, but.
President Deckard, commissioners, that is correct. With, talking with the owners of, of the mobile home parks and the campground, they already do that. So there is a distinction between camping and the mobile home units.
And do we see a large amount of people choosing to live in RVs in this community? And is there issues directly reported to the city in regards to those people living in recreational vehicles?
During our meeting, Commissioner Frederick made a good point. If, if we are actually going to allow living in RVs, it's essentially a man camp. We have a specific ordinance for man camp, so that, that's why with the committee that was there, the owners, we agreed to the 270 days with the 30-day gap.
When you guys came out of this meeting, everybody was, was fine with it?
Yep. And, and the property owners and the, are not here this evening, so.
I know the, the few that I have driven through, they, they do have segregated, you know, segregated. I mean, you definitely can tell where camping areas are for the temporary, the fifth wheels, the campers, ice houses, which do exist. So I think they already have that sorted out. The biggest item is, I wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with the timeframe, the 270 days, the 30 days. They're okay with the, the size, the 10 feet in between?
They were, I guess.
That's pretty much a standard, I think, yeah.
And that was actually what the majority of that meeting covered was that 270 and the separation and, and the lot size for the camping space. It was a number, I think, they may have actually thrown that number out of what they have currently for the square footage of the lot.
Well, I respect all the work that you guys have done on this ordinance, but I will not be voting for it. I'm still not supportive of the.
Simple, it's a simple fact that an RV is a temporary structure. It's not a house, it's not an apartment. It's made to be mobile and temporary.
Well, for some people, that's the only thing they have.
No.
I just, it's never been required before. To me, I just had a couple of people reach out, it's just not something I'll dispute. But I respect all the work you guys do.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Schwent or other members of the staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, so I will open up the public hearing section. If there's anyone from the public has any comments. If there's anyone from the public has any comments, questions, or concerns about ordinance 6, 1665, and which is our new campground ordinance, please come forward, state your name and your concerns. Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Are there any other comments, questions for staff from commissioners? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on the first reading of 1665.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum.
No.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 1665. And is there anything else? We'll go back to Item 11, or anything else, commissioners? I know we had Mr. Hirschfeld up here. Is there anything else, commissioners? You wish to discuss? Hearing nothing, I will look for a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, a second. We are adjourned.